Call to order, and I think we'll start on my right. We'll do roll call. We are going to call to order the meeting of 6:20, 2013, and the time is 6:30. On my right, roll call.
Ryan Coleman here.
My name is Lam.
Mike Luxenberg.
Manuel Soto.
Joe Lipinski.
Mike Collins, thanks to all the Spurs and Fleet and Heat fans clicking through and checking on the planning commission.
In your dreams?
They always click through.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is approved. I'd also like to have a motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of 6:06.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's review the work plan and the director's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll just note that Commissioner Philip Cherian emailed before this meeting saying he was delayed at work and he will join us as soon as possible, so we'll probably see him in the next few minutes. If you'll take a look at your calendar, and we'll just go through that first. Tonight is an introductory session on the -- one of the other item out of the 2013 docket. This is the net density, gross density calculation proposal, and Robin Probsting, our associate planner, will be walking you through that in a few minutes' time. We've got time set aside for this at your next two meetings, on July 11th and July 25th. The July 11th meeting, we will have a couple of commissioners absent, so we'll work with them to catch them up and make sure that everybody's ready for the 25th. We are trying to complete the commission's process on this item. It's a relatively small and relatively simple item within these three meetings, if that's possible. And, of course, I'll remind everybody what we're trying to do is to have both pieces of the 2013 docket arrive at the council in September this year. We'll plan for a handoff then. You've already done piece number one, which was the level of service recommendations, so this is piece number two. Also, tonight, we've got a short time looking at bylaws, and this is coming out of your retreat that you held on June 8th. Your packet included the retreat notes and the amendments to bylaws per your direction from that retreat, so we'll need to take action on that later tonight. On the 11th, we'll talk about this project here you're talking about here tonight with Robin again. We'll also give you a short update on the comprehensive plan. I'll note that two days before that, on the 9th, I'll be providing a department report for the city council, so I'll give the planning commission the same information I would have given the council on the 9th, I'll leave it to you on the 11th. So 11th will be a busy night. And then on the 25th, we've got deliberations, recommendations, and a public hearing for you on this item. I think we were going to do the public hearing on the 25th or the 11th. The calendar shows 11th, but I think it's the 25th, so we need to get the calendar corrected. And then the other thing coming out of the retreat was a desire by the council or the commission to have some training on Robert's rules, and we've arranged for that on July 25th with the Anne McFarland, who has a company called Jurassic Parliament. And a bit of a funny name. She actually uses little dinosaur models in the training process, and it sounds a little silly, but it's actually quite effective. I've seen it done a couple times, and I participated once, and so I think you'll find the evening enjoyable and informative.
You know, Cameron, I've been called a dinosaur by people, but they might have meant something different.
Indeed. Well, we'll all be dinosaurs that night.
Okay.
So, and then we are showing an August break. No meetings in August, you'll notice on the calendar. That's typical for us. And then coming back on September 5th, and that night, we'll be giving you an update on the economic development plan, and we've talked about that before, and remember you had the consultant here at your last meeting on that subject. And then we've also got planned the short course. Short course, some of you have gone through before as commissioners. This is a course offered by the Planning Association of Washington and the State Department of Commerce. Offered probably a dozen of these around the state every year, and we're hosting this time along with the city of Snoqualmie, is being invited to participate here, so some of your planning commission colleagues from Snoqualmie probably will be here that night. And the short course provides everybody with kind of a refresher or initial training on some of the fundamental state laws and how they apply to our work on the planning commission here. And then looking through the end of the year, we'll be really focused on the comprehensive plan process and the balance of meetings in September, and then starting to work on the first element of that, the housing element, in October. I suppose I'll note that we do have a joint meeting scheduled on September 10th, so September is a bit of an extra meeting month for you. We're showing 5th, 10th, and 19th, so hopefully that's going to work for everybody. The 10th, I'll note, is on the city council meeting night, so that's a Tuesday night, so make sure you get that on your calendars now, and let Debbie know if there are any conflicts with any of these dates. We always join the council on their night. And I'll note for the record that we continue to work with the chair, vice chair, mayor, deputy mayor, city manager, and I on a regular basis in between these meetings to make sure that the council and the commission stay in sync on all of our work. That's kind of the calendar look ahead. Any questions on that?
Let's move ahead to the director's report.
And I'll try to make a quick -- this week, there was a community and economic development committee meeting of the council where Community Attributes, the consultant that worked with you last time, came back and provided a little bit more updated material on the economic profile and some material on their stakeholder interview process. That PowerPoint is online, if anybody would like to take a look at it. Please feel free to do so, and let either Lyman Howard or Deputy City Manager or me know if you have questions. The next step for them will be to come back to that committee, I think, on July 9th, and that'll be an important meeting because they'll be reporting on some of the pro forma analysis they've been doing, especially for town center development. We're kind of refreshing the work that was done back in mid and late 2000s that informed the town center plan. Obviously, with economic downturn, we want to make sure that the city's numbers and resulting regulations are solid, or if we need to make a change, we do that. So that could result in some homework assignments for staff, but more importantly, could result in some development regulations or policy amendments the council would prioritize, and some of them might need planning commission review. So we'll keep you apprised as we know more and as the council takes action on that. Other thing to note of interest, the environmentally critical areas code amendments are winding their way down at the council. I think we will have two more city council meetings. They did work their way through some additional policy decisions at their last meeting, and they've got a handful more to do. Probably the biggest one relates to the pilot program for the no disturbance area, and that will take place -- we hope the decision gets made on Tuesday, July 2nd. Public hearing has been closed, so there's no more public input into that process, but the council is going through its deliberations and eventually making a decision. We'll follow up that with the actual code to implement all the council's decisions for them to confirm on July 15th. They did take one action this last meeting to further extend the sunset date. I made a mathematical error in calculating when that sunset was actually expiring, and it was expiring a little earlier than I thought, so the council took an emergency action and kicked it out to the date that we had been telling them all along, which would be July 31st. So that means they can comfortably take their action on the 2nd and the 15th, and no worries that the sunset will kick in. So with that, that's my director's report. Any questions?
No questions. Let's move ahead.
Okay. So your main item of business here tonight -- oh, actually, public comment is the next item, and then we'll do the introduction.
Let me open up public comment.
My name is Gregory Kippe, address 3011, 211th Avenue Northeast in Sammamish, and I really don't have any prepared statements for this evening. I'm here to listen to the briefing, and we'll be back next week when I think more thorough discussion is going to take place with regard to the R1 density pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you. We close public comment.
And I'll just note, Greg Kippe, who had made the proposal that the council placed on the docket, so he'll be speaking to you kind of as the proponent for that during this process. As we do with all of the docket proposals, the staff meet with the proponents before and in between planning commission meetings so that we're all staying in sync on the terms of the analysis, and that we get Greg's insights as we prepare our analysis as well. So we have a meeting, I think we're trying to schedule for Monday this coming week along that. With that, I'll ask Robin to come up and join you and start working your way through the slides. I think for efficiency's sake, my suggestion is that we hold most of the questions till the end, if that works for the commission. Certainly, if there's a burning question, go ahead and seek recognition from the chair, but I think it may be most efficient if we let Robin go through everything, and then we circle back to get anything that seems that it needs more clarification.
Is that okay with everybody?
Super.
Let's do it.
No, it's okay, Robin.
Excellent. Good evening. So again, as Cameron said, I'm Robin Probsting. I'm the new associate planner here at the city. Primarily, I'm working on the comprehensive plan rewrite, but I'm also taking projects such as this. This is my first docket application, and it's also my first time speaking in front of the planning commission, so please bear with me. Thank you for not biting.
Welcome.
Thank you. So the purpose of this presentation is to give a brief overview of the proposal, as well as hear what questions come up for you. There will be a work session next month on the 11th, and it would be helpful for me to understand what your concerns and questions are so that I can hopefully have some answers for you. Dive into the proposal here. This proposal was received through the 2013 docket process, which, just as a reminder, is the process by which comprehensive plan amendments and development regulation changes are submitted to the city for evaluation. This particular proposal asks to change the development regulations in the R1 zone only. It would change the density calculations so that gross area rather than net area is used to calculate how many units can be built. Net area is the gross area less any steep slopes, wetlands, streams, associated buffers, also streets. Those are deducted from the gross area to yield net area. The original application was received last fall, and at the December 11th city council meeting, Mr. Kippe requested that the council consider a pilot program. At that meeting, the city council passed a motion to include a pilot program of up to five projects on the 2013 docket, and our direction now is simply to consider whether or not we should have a pilot program. Here's some context for the process of evaluating this proposal. Council put consideration of the density pilot program on the docket last December. I've been working with my colleagues to do some analysis this spring, and after today's introductory session, there will be a work session and then a hearing next month. And finally, city council will make a recommendation -- excuse me, will make a decision, rather, sometime after you give them your recommendation. Sammamish currently uses net area, as I said, to calculate density. This is true across all zones. To find the net area of the site, again, wetlands and streams, steep slopes, associated buffers and streets are subtracted from the gross area of the site to yield net area. And the reason for this goes back to an ordinance that was passed in 2005, and in that ordinance, city council cited comprehensive plan goals and policies that steered development regulation toward limiting density, limiting impervious surface, and developing within the environmental carrying capacity of the land. And that ordinance also stated that the change to net density calculations would enable the city to meet its growth targets. That means that even though fewer units would be built under net density calculation rather than gross density, we would still be able to meet the growth targets that we're required to under growth management. So just to illustrate what all these terms mean, I just made an example here. Under current code, a 30-acre site that had 10 acres of lands that were encumbered in some way due to critical areas, slopes, that kind of thing, would have those 10 acres deducted from the gross area, and you would go from 30 gross acres to 20 net acres. R1 zoning allows one unit per acre, and just to clarify, that doesn't mean that there needs to be one dwelling unit per acre. It just means that that's the density that is used for calculation, so you're allowed to have one unit per acre. And separate from density requirements in the R1 zone, there's also the 50% open space dedication requirement, and that does not affect the total number of units that may be built, it simply affects their arrangement. So 50% of the original site needs to be dedicated to open space, and then the allowed dwelling units can be built on the buildable land. So the result of this is that you have 20 dwelling units on 15 acres. In contrast, under this proposal, this is the density that would be allowed on the same hypothetical site, so start with the same 30 acres. There's no deduction for critical areas, so you're allowed to have 30 acres, one dwelling unit per acre. The same 50% open space dedication, you're left with 15 buildable acres, and the result is that there are 30 dwelling units on 15 acres. So, and is this clear? Does the illustration make sense? Okay, good. I've listed here, these are the comprehensive plan goals and policies that were cited in the ordinance adopting the net density calculations back in 2005. It just helps to show how we got where we are. The comprehensive plan speaks to, as you see, preserving neighborhood character and having tools in place that limit the intensity of development. And since this proposal only pertains to the R1 zone, I have a little background on that. The R1 zone has been applied to areas that lie on or are adjacent to large areas of sensitive lands. The areas that are currently R1 are ones where typically there's a large area of wetlands or areas that are prone to erosion. R1 lands also typically are in areas with larger lots, often inherited from King County, and they also tend to lack sewer service, and so they're on septic instead. So I've made a map here. I hope this is clear. What I've done, here's a map of the city, and then the R1 zone is in yellow. It blobs here. See if my -- here it is. On the east side here, outlined in green are the wetland management overlay areas. Over here in turquoise, those are the erosion hazard near sensitive water body overlays, and then in blue is the no disturbance area. So just meant to show degree of overlap between R1 and the overlay areas. So my job is to provide analysis and also to provide you with the information that you'll need to make your recommendation. So as I prefer my staff report, I'll be unpacking some of these issues, pull out relevant comp plan goals and policies, providing analysis, and also bring more maps as well so we can look at data spatially. We've begun outlining evaluation criteria so that we'll know ahead of time how we'll review the proposal and whether or not it fits into the policy framework of Sammamish. We'll need to set success criteria so that if a pilot program is indeed adopted, we'll have a way of measuring whether projects are successful or not. And lastly, certainly, we need to gather public input, incorporate public input, and incorporate that into the final product. Here are some evaluation criteria by which the code directs us to evaluate docket applications, in this case, to evaluate whether a pilot program is right for Sammamish. The last two items, the comprehensive plan and the existing land uses, are especially important. They provide the most direct policy guidance. And then thinking ahead, it may be necessary to establish parameters for projects that are considered for the pilot program, should one be adopted, so that, again, we keep to the policy framework we're given. So here are some potential selection criteria. And finally, it's important to have success criterias that will have a way of evaluating...
Go back to the previous show. Give people another minute to read that.
Oh, sorry, of course. Again, want to capture questions, feedback, concerns?
Go ahead and describe those more than one time.
Okay. So, since R1 does tend to be in areas where there are -- it's close to or on sensitive areas, excluding sites where there could be irreversible damage. If a project does fail, one might not want to have projects where the damage couldn't be undone. Again, because R1, a lot of it lies in the areas that are not serviced by any infrastructure. If we had a pilot project where there was no infrastructure, that would require some pretty costly improvements, so it may make sense to exclude those lands. Kind of same idea with the overlay zones. It may not be the most prudent place to increase intensity of development if it's in critical areas. And then a suggestion I received also was to limit the overall number of units, not only the number of projects, which, of course, has been set at five, but the overall scope and size of this project. Is that covered?
Yeah, let me just add a...
No, please. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Robin, thank you. This is a good overview. I think both the valuation criteria, this project selection criteria, and your success criteria are all where we need your input and guidance to refine these and make sure they hit the mark. I don't need those tonight, but you certainly could fill a follow-up on that, and we'll talk about that a little bit more on the 11th. We'll also be interested in Mr. Kippe's input and input from the public on these as well. I'll just note that I want to remind the commission how this whole thing works. Right now, the way that -- go back to that example that Robin went through. If you have onsite critical areas and buffers, those are subtracted from your gross density to create a net...
Can you go back to that page? I believe it's number three.
Sure. Thanks. So that's the way the proposal works, is that right now, our current code, you subtract the 10 acres of critical areas here and buffers so that you have net acres to apply and then multiply at whatever your zone density is. In this case, R1, so it's just times one, so the math is very simple. Under the proposal, you would not subtract that. So the bottom line is, you still have the same development site, 30-acre site with 10 acres of encumbered lands. You'd have 20 houses on this one under current code, and you'd bump that up to 30 here. This makes a difference for sites that have environmentally critical areas on them. If you don't have those environmentally critical areas, there's not much difference between these two. So it makes a difference if you have more constraints. So that's the bit of the interesting challenge that we have here. If we want to look at some criteria here, we want to make sure that we craft that criteria in such a way that if we want to make this available to people, they aren't locked out of being made available by the fact that our criteria say, well, if you have wetlands on the site, then you can't do it. So the only people that could take advantage of this, really, and benefit are the people that do have the wetlands. So it's -- what we had up in that first bullet was perhaps we just need to look at the very high-value wetlands as the ones of interest in this case. So a bog, for example. And then I wanted to make a comment on the last bullet, too, which is an issue that's being debated right now at the city council. And you remember, you had recommended, I think, a total of nine pilot program projects for the no disturbance area pilot program as part of ECA. Well, where the council is talking right now is potentially a different number there, but perhaps more importantly, some limitations on the number of lots generated out of that pilot program. So a second criterion, in addition to the number of projects, they're interested in how big are those projects? So we want to take note of that, since that's going on at the council now. We may want to consider something like that in this process, too. So you can kind of see where the staff is. We're trying to learn and keep up with the thinking at both the commission and the council stage. Again, these are proposed and draft. We're not calling them final, and we need to get your input. We need to get the input from the proponent and from the public, obviously, before this is all finalized. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood a little bit more about how these criteria might work. Does that make sense? Any other questions for Robin or me?
I got one.
Right. No more questions now. I think we should go ahead. We've got more. Oh, I'm sorry. There was a question.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. So is this just a comp plan amendment, or are we also going to be crafting some interim regulatory standards for 21A?
I think you'd probably be doing both. In fact, I'm not quite sure exactly what the comp plan amendment is going to look like here, but it certainly is a change to the development regulations, and so I think we would probably want to make sure that they are done in harmony, so whatever we do, there'd be two components associated with that.
Cameron, an extension of Commissioner Coleman's question. I know we will be spending significant amount of time later this year, next year, on comp plan. Land use planning is a huge part of comp plan policy discussion. I'm wondering whether a surgical approach of pilot project discussion while we will be doing a big-picture land use planning discussion to understand different zoning pattern and their impacts. I'm just wondering about the timing, whether it's the right thing to do at this very moment, or we should combine everything in one?
And it's a good observation. We did have that discussion with the city council last fall when the docket was being set, and the council, I think, very specifically and deliberately said that they wanted to consider this now as part of 2013. So I think that is our assignment right now, and so we've dedicated time to it. So I don't know that it would preclude us from taking another look, potentially a broader look, as a part of the comp plan process. There's nothing barring us from doing that. And I think especially if the council decides to approve, if you recommend and the council approves a pilot program, it wouldn't surprise me if the council gives us some marching orders to look at it a little more broadly. Right now, I don't want to predict because we're just at the start of this, but I think your observation that it potentially has a broader question, we've recognized, too.
One other thing, especially when we are going to look at very narrowly about a pilot project, and in comp plan, we'll be looking at growth management as a whole.
Right.
So we want to make sure that we have enough information so that we don't overlook something that you would later on provide information about.
Yeah, and we'll do our best with regard to this. I think we have to, for both time reasons and some horsepower reasons, focus on just R1 and focus on a fairly modest pilot program that the council's already, to some extent, put some upper limits on. So I think the impacts here, you know, by definition, are not going to be sweeping. They're going to be fairly modest and fairly understandable for the pilot program. If you recommend it, if the council adopts it, if they give us some more direction as part of the comp plan process, that could open up a wider array to look at. And I'll just make a program note. We've talked a little bit about this. Your meeting with the council in the joint meeting on September 10th, you'll be talking a little bit about that comp plan process. They, the council, will be providing some direction to us and to you at their meetings in October and November, so we'll keep that conversation alive, and you'll have an opportunity to talk with them before they reach those policy, give us that policy direction.
Other question?
Are we at the question point, or is Robin still...
Let's let Robin finish the pitch, and then we'll go to questions.
No, I appreciate unpacking all those. I think I'm at the -- yeah, I really was at the end, just to review what the criteria will be, and then just remind you that there's...
Do you have a...
No, that's right. We went back a little bit. Okay. Yes, so this is, yeah, potential success criteria, just so that we have a way of measuring whether or not projects were successful or not, clearly. So as illustrated by the example I gave earlier, certainly, the change from using net area to using gross area will intensify development in some way. Of course, it'll depend on... Of course, it'll depend on the nature of the site and how much of each site is encumbered, but a success criteria will help determine whether or not the changes are good or not. So, certainly, a program would have to respond to the direction given in the docket resolution that city council passed last December. It would need to conform to your bylaws as a planning commission. It must be consistent with Growth Management Act goals, and as well as Comprehensive Plan Act, excuse me, Comprehensive Plan Goals and Policies. Should certainly avoid any impacts to neighboring sites, or, you know, places downstream, other critical areas. We always strive for a balance between private property rights and environmental quality, and it'll be part of this discussion. Another component, I've been, as part of my analysis, I'm looking at other jurisdictions to see where we fall, as far as density calculations go, you know, whether we fall within the range of what's there, or if we're an outlier in some way. And lastly, it'll be important to look for any unintended consequences, since those tend to be devil planning. Yes, that is all I have. Just as a reminder, the work session is on July 11th. I will have a staff report to you before then. The hearing will be on July 25th, and at which point, hopefully, you'll have a recommendation for the council. And in the meantime, I encourage you to send me questions, comments, concerns, and criticism. Thank you.
Questions now on the pitch. Mike?
Ryan, were you done?
I mean, I've got other questions.
I have four questions. Mike, cut me off anytime I'm too long.
Commissioner Collins, pull your microphone.
I have four questions, Mike. Cut, cut me off if I go too long.
I will.
The first, the first one, Robin, seems to be just the ability of comparison of ECA versus non-ECA. Can you use it for the open space, or can you not use it for the open space?
That's a good point, oh.
And I'd like you to develop that theme for your next presentation. I don't really want to hear anything about it right now. Right now, you can't, and we're talking about allowing it, and that's the difference between the two yields. But I'd like to see it addressed that way.
Mm-hmm, I should make that clear.
Because it's outside of the ECA. It's not inside of it, and open space is valid inside the ECA. Number two is, infrastructure is paid by the developer. We're not offering to pay anything. So, infrastructure, in my opinion, on your chart of things, is a fairly low priority. Okay? Unless we're going to give grants, I don't see that coming. The other one is, I agree with you on your success statement. What's the various way the other municipalities around us do it? When it was brought up last time, they kind of said that allowing this in the open space, the ECA in the open space, was allowed by the other. So, there was a net diff density higher in other jurisdictions. And then, the last one is, specifically, I'd like to know how fee and lieu, if it's passed in the ECA, will affect this whole thing. Because if it's a wetland, technically, you're going to be able to buy down that ECA range and be able to develop into that buffer, and this might be a conflict with that, and I'd like to know how those two would work together.
Absolutely, thank you.
I'm done, thank you.
We're not going to do it now, but if, when you think about those, if you have additional questions for Commissioner Collins, you can follow up with him, make sure he understands what he asked.
Very good.
I understand where, man.
I know you understand.
I'm sorry, I thought you said whether he understands where he's at.
Mr. Coleman?
Oh, you, okay, I just thought, all right, that's good.
I don't want to, you know, I want to jump around to keep everybody on their toes.
Good, good thinking. All right. Sort of a compound question, because one of, one of the concerns that was brought to light was about the availability of sewer. And so, just a general question, does the city require any new resident, any new development to connect a sewer, or are there still limited options for septic drainfields?
I know at certain densities, that's triggered. Cameron, can I defer to you on this? I'm still learning the, learning how things work here. I still have organ brain, so.
There are still options for development, both in a single-family context, and I've seen it in rare circumstances in a subdivision. Really depends on the distance between the proposed development site and the availability of that sewer stub. There are some places in the city where, just because of topography and development patterns, it would be exorbitantly expensive to try to extend sewer. So, we tend to see those stay on the, on the septic design, and that typically is in the R1 areas. So, there's overlap there. It's not common, but I think what we'll do in our homework piece is that we'll provide you kind of with the city's current code, and how the code treats that question, so that you know exactly how that works.
Okay. So, without getting into too much detail, I think we should think about that. We should think about, you know, if, if, if we agree with this pilot project, what we're going to see is, we're going to see, most likely, development in the R1 with lot sizes that are, my guess is, you know, half an acre, or potentially less. So, we should think about, if sewer is available, requiring it to, requiring those projects to connect. If it's not available, a minimum lot size or something for, I mean, Department of Health is going to regulate septic systems anyway, so.
And that's true. So, there are other ways that other requirements kick in. You're right about that.
And then, just, just to kind of give us some cheat sheet, you know, what's considered open space? Obviously, the, in any of the ECA kind of areas, wetlands, steep slope, buffers, et cetera, is open space. You know, is it just forested area, pasture, open lawn? Just to kind of, kind of give us a little bit on that.
Sure, we can cover that for you.
Thanks.
Other questions?
The one that would piggyback on that is surface water development manual updates, and whether or not they're going to allow that groundwater to go into a wetland. Just depends on the development.
Well, yeah.
So, are we asking the staff to do, do something on that issue?
It's sewers and surface water. It's the combination.
Not sure I'm quite tracking with the surface water issue.
Okay, let's say you do this development that's much larger, but you're condensing the density onto a smaller area. When you're condensing density like that, surface water may be an issue, and you might have to do an alternative way of transporting that or using it, rainwater harvesting or something, because it can't be allowed into the wetland currently under ECA regulations.
Okay, we'll, we can cover that, too. I think it may be helpful if we either find in the files or create a representative development site or two, and kind of show you how each of these pieces of the code actually works. And then, if the pilot program will be in effect, how would that change the site layout? Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Soto?
I have a comment. Actually, can I see the, the map that shows the R1s and the, I missed the map on the, on the memo that was sent out, and I, I forgot about sending a note that was out of town part of a week, so, but, just a comment that I missed the map on, in this whole discussion. And my question is regarding, given the discussion that we're having, and the, and the map, and there are that several areas are R1, it sounds to me that the, the impacts are going to be different in different areas, in terms of how much land is affected, and how much, actually, going sort of to Commissioner Collins' question, and how much, how much are you going to be cornered in terms of the proportion of land you can develop? Because the, the proposal, as it stands right now, it's just basically accounting for the gross density area. So, if you, if you, if your property is impacted less than 50%, you're not, you're only developing twice as much, which would be only two units an acre. So, I guess there's a difference between that and developing 10 units an acre, so that's, that's what I'm saying. So, I don't know if you're planning on doing some analysis of the range of impacts you can have in these different areas or not, but it might be useful, because I think we're talking about a, several different levels of, of impact here.
Other questions?
Cameron, I would like to see, within the R1 areas, given the current development already existence, how much space or landmass acre-wise even available to have this type of pilot projects? What I'm taking as an assumption, though, is that this is not going to be something amenable to a smaller lot, smaller in R1, meaning just a couple of acres. It might be great for five-plus acres. So, I wanted to have an understanding of what's currently available.
Right. No, that's a good point. So, there's probably a parcel size criterion that we might want to look at, and we'll do our best to give you some data on kind of the developability, remaining developability for R1. Our resource is probably going to be a little bit out of date, and so, we'll have to make a caveat. One of the things that's happening, in fact, Robin will be working with Emily on this, is to update what's called our land capacity map. And it's also a required report we have to give to the state called a buildable lands report. We'll essentially kill two birds with one stone by updating that map. And by zone, actually, down to the parcel level, we will hopefully capture that data and update it. Since the last time we did this, horizon date, that, that time was April of 2006. So, you will be getting that as a part of the comprehensive plan rewrite process in full, and we'll do our best to give you the best kind of snapshot before that, that report is done, on R1.
Commissioner Collins?
What do you guys think about a map? Is this useful?
Use the microphone.
I'm sorry, what do you guys think about the map? Is this a useful format for you? I get lost, because there's no streets. Does that, does that?
Yeah, we, we, and I apologize, the map wasn't in, a part of your packet. We have been working on this for a while, and I think we'll be looking at trying to create some additional maps and better graphics. We'll probably zoom in on a couple of areas as, as the next iteration. This obviously gives you a citywide picture, which is, which is good, just to get some context, but we think, we need to zoom in and give you some streets and reference points.
Cool, thank you.
Well, if I can ask one other informational need, examples, oh, just one example that Robin created or developed for us, is a large-size lot, 30-acre, 10-acre contained by ECA. Wanted to see a few more examples in a real-life basis, depending on the availability, how would the density change? If we have a 10-acre lot and 6-acre contained, then what would happen to the density? Because that would give us an understanding of R1 versus R4 versus R2, how real-life things.
Happy to do that, yeah, I'll give you a spectrum.
You know, as I hear the questions from the commissioners, it seems to me that a chart that might help a lot is if you had a chart that was headed impacts. Because the question that we have to answer is, should we implement this pilot project, but what are the impacts? And you might put it in a couple of buckets. You know, the things that you think are significant impacts, and the things that are not so significant. They don't have to be too specific about that, but give us a sense of that, because essentially, it's hard for us to imagine, you know, what's the problem with doing this? I mean, I think that's the kind of question that all of these things are underneath everything that we've heard. Does that make sense to people? Commissioner Collins?
I'm sorry, while Mobuba was talking, the other one is, what, what kind of density is the new lot going to wind up being? And will it exceed R4 from R1? It'll never exceed R4.
No, it won't get up, up to that. I, I, I think, well, let us, let us play with some of those scenarios, so that we can give you a really crisp answer to that question.
Because along with the lines of total number of units that the council's looking with on ECA, they're going to want to know if it ever came close to R4.
So, remember this, even under the gross density approach, if you really look at the original parcel, like in our example, it's 30 acres, and with the change to a more gross density approach, you've still got 30 lots out of that 30 acres, so it's still one home per gross acre. It's the development area itself that gets denser, and, and that may be the area of interest for the commission, is what does that look like, right?
Right.
And, you know, hopefully, Mr. Kip has heard some of the questions here, which will help you for your, your comments next time.
Very much so, thank you.
Just one more comment, Chair, about your impact table thing. I think we should also have something in there about how those impacts could be mitigated, either with city code or some proposed.
Good idea.
Whatever. So, just, just so that it's not like unavoidable.
Sure.
Yeah, okay. I think you're thinking along the same lines we are, trying to tease out this information and present it in a logical format. Robin's going to be working hard, because our, our deadline to getting this out is actually next Friday, and we've got to get a draft of it to the chair and vice chair for early review by Wednesday, so we're already behind the eight ball a bit. So, unless there's another burning need for some data development, I'd love to start on what you've given us already.
I think Commissioner Soto has one more comment.
One more common question, but it can be answered later. There's a mention about the transportation impacts of doing the development denser, and my question is, when the travel model, it's calculated, what does it use? The gross area or the net area? Does it use all the potential units, or the, or the units that can actually be developed?
I will confirm this, but I do believe that there is a, a discount, and so, it's closer to a net. So, we're probably, you know, we, we would be adding some additional trips through this. With regard to a pilot program, we're really, and whether it's five projects, and whether you put a cap on the number of actual units coming out of it, we're still talking a very, very minor amount of traffic. So, we'll, we'll confirm this with the public works folks, but I don't think we'll be able to detect any actual change to trip patterns based on the pilot program. But I'll confirm how it's done and report back to you.
Yes, some, some of the commissioners, I may remember, Mr. Kip did a, a quick analysis, and it was a pretty small, my memory is a pretty small cumulative increase over the entire buildout of the city. So, maybe, maybe Mr. Kip could resurrect that and bring it to us.
I have a file. All right, guys.
Perfect.
Cameron, on behalf of the commission, I want to thank Robin for her information today. The discussion we had was exactly the right kind of discussion, and I think you set the stage, so thank you.
All right, sounds like Robin's off the hook, and we can move on to the other business items.
Robin's on the hook, but she just doesn't need to talk to us anymore.
For the moment, right. All right, thank you, Robin.
Let's move to the new business item, and the bylaw revision.
And so, I want to just also note, in your packet, you did have your notes from the retreat. I want to make sure everybody went through those. Those did get reviewed from me first, and then the chair and vice chair, and then they were sent out to the commissioners as part of the packet. If any commissioner has edits to the notes, we need to know that, so that we can get them corrected. You know, we could, it might be nice if, if there are any edits, let us know, so that we could kind of formalize those notes next time. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. And then, what I did is, I followed two of the three action items out of that, and we're working on the third. So, the first action item was the Robert's Rules, and we've got that scheduled on, on the commission calendar. Second action item was the bylaws, which we're talking about tonight. Third action item was to consider the, kind of the incremental approach that Commissioner Collins was advocating for, how we're going to take on the comp plan, and I'll be working with Robin and Emily about how we're going to execute that. So, more to come on that piece. So, looking at the bylaws, we've made two changes. One is on page three of five, on the public comment, and then, the big one is on page five of five. So, just very quickly, this is based, again, on the direction we got from the commission at your retreat. We added a second kind of tier for public comments, to have a three-minute limit for non-agenda topics, so that'll help us be efficient during our meetings, where we have folks that want to come and talk to the commission about things that aren't part of your regular program. And then, the most important thing, I think, is the norms, and those have been added as an additional Article 14 at the end. And again, I just tried to put in bylaw style what I heard from the commission and what are reflected in retreat notes. Hopefully, these are pretty self-explanatory, but I think, Mr. Chair, if you wanted to have any further comments on the, the edits to the bylaws, and then solicit any comments from commissioners, before you take your action.
Questions? Commissioner Lipinski?
I have comments.
Go ahead.
Ever since I became a member of the planning commission, staff in the planning commission and the city council fight. and the city council fights back against public input, and I don't understand it. When I came here and started, it was 3 minutes. People constantly complained that they weren't ready and they couldn't get stuff done. So the last planning commission, before ECA, we had lots of discussion. I went for unlimited thing, other people said, no, stick to the 3, do the writing. We settled on 7. All the feedback we've gotten was, people really enjoyed that. They liked being part of the process. They complained that they don't get that same impact at the city council when they're stuck to 3 minutes. Now, because one guy came and talked for 14 minutes, we're going back to 3 minutes for non-agenda. I've been here for 3 and 1/2 years, and even his non-agenda was close to stuff that we should hear. I think discounting what the public has to say is the wrong way to go, and I think putting it in there is bad.
Other comments on other portions of the bylaws? Would you like to make an amendment, or?
We ought to vote against it.
I understand. Well, I would entertain a motion to approve the bylaws, then.
I move we approve the bylaws as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I think they're past 6 to 1.
5 to 1.
5 to 1, since we still don't have Commissioner Cherian here.
That's right. I can't count, thank you for correcting me.
So that's the business item. We'll get these up on the website as they have been amended. I don't think you have anything else scheduled here tonight, unless you have other things you need from us as staff.
We don't, and we can tell Commissioner Cherian that since he wasn't here, we were able to finish early.
Oh, thank you.
I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned at 7:22.